...of November twelfth, twenty nineteen to order. And the first order of business is the invocation and the pledge.
Please pray with me. Dear God, thank you for the ability to meet peaceably and to discuss business of the town today, God. Thank you for the annual celebration yesterday of our veterans. Thank you for what they have given us, what they have fought for, thank you for their families, and what they have given up for our freedoms. Please help us to make fair and just and good and wise decisions today. In your son's name we pray, amen.
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 And join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do, uh, we did add one item to the, um, workshop, to the, um, meeting, and that's the executive session for possible litigation at the, uh, end of this meeting, so. Okay. And everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from last month.
I move to approve the October twenty first, twenty nineteen minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
And I abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple proclamations. Uh, Jay, you want to start with yours, Municipal Government Works Month proclamation?
All right, the Commissioners of Leonardtown proclaim November to be Municipal Government Works Month. Whereas the town of Leonardtown was established in seventeen oh eight, and whereas Maryland is home to a hundred fifty-seven other municipalities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Leonardtown is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. Now therefore be it, be it proclaimed that the Commissioners of Leonardtown, Maryland hereby join the Maryland Municipal League and declare November twenty nineteen to be Municipal Government Works Month in Leonardtown, November twelfth, twenty nineteen. Signed, Mayor Dan Burris and the Leonardtown Council.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mary, Small Business Saturday information.
Okay, and I love my small businesses, so I'm happy to do this, and there's going to be a lot of numbers in here, so I'm going to test you guys when I'm done with this proclamation. Whereas, the town of Leonardtown, Maryland celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration. There are currently thirty point two million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for sixty-five point nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand seventeen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point five percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas ninety percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on the community. And whereas eighty-nine percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas seventy-three percent of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community, sixty-four percent. And whereas, the town of Leonardtown supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as the public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Leonardtown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, a Small Business Saturday, signed by the mayor and the council of Leonardtown.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Rebecca, Treasury Report, please.
Okay, briefly, the October financial information was included in your packet. I did transfer three hundred thousand dollars to the local government investment fund during the month. And we are thirty-three percent through the budget year. You may see there are a few accounts that look a little odd, but there are some allocations necessary. I'll do that by journal entry for December. And then since on the agenda we have a presentation of the F one nineteen audit, I'll introduce Carl Logan. He's a principal with BBD from Philadelphia. He was in charge of our engagement, was on site, and supervised all the work that was done, and so.
That's me now?
Yeah.
So have I said, like, you're the rest?
No, you can stand.
Oh, no.
You can do whatever you want, it's it, stand, doesn't matter.
Is that, oh, no, I'll stand.
Do you have a little table?
No, I'm good. So, um, I usually stand. Um, so I'm going to give you a synopsis, um, if you want the long version or the short version, short version?
Sure.
Because I know, um, from what I can tell and what I see Rebecca provides you on a monthly basis, everyone is well aware of where you stand at the year end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Um, you're already a couple months in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, so this is pretty much just putting a wrap on two thousand nineteen, putting a ribbon on it, and moving on to fully into two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So in your, uh, board packets, you should have a, you know, a new audit report here. It's a little bit different than you get in the past. Um, so I guess that's exciting, a different audit report, a different presentation. So I'm going to go over the highlights in the audit report, and the most important thing in the audit report is obviously on pages one and two, and that is what you are hiring this for. Pages one and two is your independent auditor's report. I get, I think at this point it's going to be pored over into three pages, um, pretty soon. It was only like a page a couple of years ago, but I feel like they keep on adding stuff to it. But at the end of the day, it outlines what your responsibilities are as management, what our responsibilities are as the auditor. And it, it gives, uh, a synopsis of, you know, what our responsibilities are for each part of the audit report. But basically, when you take it all, and what it all boils down to is the fact that, you know, it's saying that the numbers that were presented to us by management for the year end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen were fairly presented. Um, I would say that we made no journal entries throughout our audits, so whatever's being presented to you on a monthly basis, except for maybe any accruals that are done after your year end are being, um, reflected in this audit report. Um, I'm going to kind of skip around a little bit, um, but first I, I'd be admissed to not mention pages three through, I guess it goes all the way to page nine, and this is Management's Discussion Analysis. And I would recommend everybody on the board that doesn't want to read the whole audit report, or just anybody in general that wants to get, you know, uh, not have to read the whole financial statement, or is not a, you know, frequent user of the financial statements, read pages three through nine. Um, this is something that's put together by Rebecca, and it kind of gives a synopsis of what happened during the year in a kind of like snapshot of, you know, doesn't, without going through, you know, the ins and outs of every single transaction, just gives you the highlights for the year. And I think it's a really good, um, job in terms of, um, highlighting those areas in the back and the rest of the audit report for the year end of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. As you can see up at the top, it's un-audited by us, all we do is read it to make sure that it's consistent with the rest of the audit report, and there's some other information in there, um, in Management's Discussion Analysis. The highlights factors, uh, based upon, you know, factors that could affect the future of the town, um, also, um, so we don't necessarily audit that kind of stuff, so that's why it says un-audited at the top of the, of that document. Um, the next outline, uh, section of the audit report that I'm going to go over, which I think is the most important part of the audit report, but unfortunately it gets stuck in the back, and this is on page thirty-three. On page thirty-three is the start of the General Fund Budget to Actual Reporting. So whenever I go and I present an audit to the board, um, I like to highlight this first because it's kind of like a report card, um, on, you know, the council or, you know, the board directors, whoever's in charge. And it kind of highlights how, what, what you budget at the beginning of the year and how you actually came in for, um, any respective year. So as you can see, uh, the first page here, coming on over to page number thirty-four are your revenues. And there's two items, um, in the revenue section that I definitely want to highlight. So as you can see, on the bottom of page thirty-four there, uh, or towards up at the top of the bottom page thirty-four, I'm not going to count the special item down below because that was unusual. As you can see, your revenues were budgeted at one point four million dollars, and they came in at one point six million dollars, almost, you know, one, one, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a positive variance of a hundred and ninety thousand. And if you look at the variances, there's one that sticks out like a sore thumb in terms of where that positive variance came from, and that's towards up at the top of page thirty-three, and you had a positive variance in your income taxes, um, received in two thousand nineteen. Now if I go back and look at the trend analysis for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, you came in a little under budget in those previous years, but it's, it's due, all due to timing in terms of, this is a really hard revenue stream to predict in terms of when this date collects it, when it gets remitted to the Leonardtown. But if you think about it intuitively, you know, you would think that those revenues are going to be going up as the town continues to grow. So this is a good sign that the economy's improving within Leonardtown, and that hopefully the, the sustained level income taxes will continue to come in, with the, uh, into the town. But at the same time, um, you know, I'm sure Rebecca will tell you the same thing, you've got to be conservative because you never know, the timing of receipt and to receive those, uh, income taxes from the state.
Well, I think a lot of that was reflective of the new tax laws, too. I mean, people paid higher taxes in Maryland this year, so Maryland collected.
That could, that could be a, that could be a factor of it as well.
Yeah.
Um, also on page thirty-four, related to your revenues, um, there was a special item. I mean, a special item is something that's infrequent, it doesn't happen, uh, on a regular basis, and this was because you sold the condo, sold one of your two condos in two thousand nineteen. In two thousand twenty, you'll see the other one being sold, and those revenues coming in, so that's, uh, something unusual in relation to your revenues and other financing sources for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. On the next page, um, thirty-five through thirty-seven, I really, or thirty-five and thirty-six, this is your expenditures. I really like these schedules as well because it's kind of detailed, but at the same time not so detailed that somebody that doesn't use the financial statements couldn't be able to, you know, understand, you know, salaries. Um, because when you look at this at the high level and everything's condensed, you see general government, community development, but this is nice, just kind of put things in terms of basic objects. So as you can see, um, most of the basic functions of the commissioner, of the town were under budget for the year, but most of your amounts that were under budget, um, for two thousand nineteen were related to your public works function. So when you actually dig down within your public works function on page thirty-six, those that have positive variances are related to streets and street maintenance and sidewalks, storm drain maintenance, and this is just due to timing. There were projects that were anticipated that happened in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen that didn't happen, that I assume would roll over and were budgeted accordingly in the following fiscal year. And that's the revenues and expenditures, and we kind of roll up to the front of the audit report to kind of show you the condensed version of what those revenues were over the expenditures for the year, and that is on page number sixteen. So this is what we just talked about, all rolled up and nice and neat on one page there. So if we take those revenues that we talked about, the one point six million dollars over the expenditures of one point four million dollars, um, plus and minus some of the other financing sources used, there were some operating transfers out to the Capital Projects Fund during the year, plus the sale of the condo proceeds, the hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. The town actually had an increase in the fund balance, uh, of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. We'll kind of go over, you know, what that increased to on one of the other pages. But as you can see, this lays it out a lot nicer on the right-hand side there. Um, there's that positive rev, positive total revenues of a hundred and ninety thousand for the revenues, um, which were the income taxes that we talked about, and then the expenditures down below. And you can see that the public works makes up most of the positive variance there. And at the beginning and, uh, also down below, you can see that you originally anticipated to, uh, add to your fund balance of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which was planned, um, based upon you were trying to get your fund balance closer to that fifty percent of your operating expenditures. Um, but you actually added three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars during the year, so that was a positive variance compared to what your goal was when we went through the budget process. Um, the next page I'm going to go over is on page number fourteen. And once again, this is even a more condensed version of the general fund, plus it accounts for some of the other funds that you have within the town. So there's that three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars at the, at the bottom of page number fourteen. So at the beginning of the year, you had eight hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, in your fund balance. You added three, three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of fund balance. And at the end of the year, within your general fund, you had one point one million dollars in your fund balance, and this puts you over the fifty percent that you were shooting for related to your, uh, general fund operating expenditures. Um, one new fund that you were added during two thousand nineteen, the CDVG Fund, has specific reporting requirements to be able to keep those separate. Um, so that fund was added for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And then also your Capital Projects Fund, there were various projects that happened during the year, um, related to the governmental activities, not related to your proprietary funds, which we'll go over in a second. Um, there wasn't much activity there in comparison to previous years. And then also you have another governmental fund, which accounts for your critical, um, Bay Area's grant, which is required to keep in a separate fund as well. Um, and now we're going to go up to page twelve. So that was the activity for the general fund and your various funds for the year. And up on page twelve is your balance sheet. This is as a specific date and time, so you have your assets, your liabilities, and your deferred inflows of resources, which is a governmental accounting term. So when you take the access of the assets and over your liabilities and deferred, uh, flows of resources, um, that is that fund balance at the one point one million dollars we just spoke about. So within that fund balance, there are various items, um, that are, um, what we consider non-spendable. Non-spendable being your prepaid items, because you can't spend a prepaid item or inventory, so that's why it's considered non-spendable. You only had prepaid items of a hundred dollars as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. You had restricted funds, and I think this is primarily almost all money that was received from the state that is legally required to be spent in a specific way, um, related to, um, some of the highway grants that you received, the fifty-two thousand. And then you have assigned amounts for those, uh, most of this consisting of, um, outstanding amounts for projects that need to be completed, et cetera, over within the town. So now that I've finished all the governmental funds, any questions, concerns, like I said, consistent with what was being reported?
No.
Okay. So I, I have to talk about the proprietary funds as well. On the proprietary fund financial statements, start on page number seventeen, and, uh, go on to eighteen, but I'm going to start on page eighteen because this is actually, um, the activity that happened for the year. There's some budget to actual information in the back, but I don't want to go back there right now, but, um, I'm going to talk about your operating, uh, the operating section of this. So you have three pieces to this, you have your wastewater treatment plant, you have your water fund, and you also have your trash fund. So up at the top, your operating revenues were two point three million dollars. Um, within those operating revenues, you had a two percent increase in your wastewater treatment plant fees, um, in accordance with the ordinance within the town. Um, there was no increases in the water fund for the current year, and then your trash fees also rose slightly in two thousand nineteen. So when you take your total operating, uh, revenues over your total operating expenses, um, you had an operating loss of one point two million dollars, but when you back out the non-cash depreciation, you actually had positive, um, about four hundred thousand dollars, um, when you take out that non-cash item. Um, then you come down below, you have your non-operating revenues, uh, expenditures of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, and these are various items that are considered part of operations, such as interest income, interest expense, and the debt service reimbursement that you have with your MetCom, um, with the MetCom agreement. And down below, um, you have capital contributions down below. So in accordance with, uh, various town ordinances, you, uh, charge impact fees and capacity allocation fees to any kind of new growth within the township. And as you can see down below, there was a lot of growth within the township that required, um, billing and the remittance of such, such fees. Um, these fees are restricted for only capital items within, within the town for, um, to accommodate the new growth that's happening within the town, and we'll kind of go over how much is sitting on your balance sheet related to those. So your total change in net position is working out to a positive four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars within your proprietary fund. Um, beginning of the year, you had thirty-four point six million dollars in your net position. We'll talk about the net position, this includes all your capital assets, because these funds are accounted for differently than governmental funds. It includes your capital assets and your long-term debt, and we'll go over that in a second. Um, so at the end of the year, you had approximately thirty-five million dollars in your net position, including all your assets, net of any kind of accumulated debt, et cetera. And we'll be able to see that up on page number seventeen. So page number seventeen, um, as you can see, you have your assets once again, and then you have your non-current assets. There's that item we talked about, the impact fees. Currently, the town has five point nine million dollars sitting in restricted cash investments, um, related to those impact fees that have accumulated over the years, um, that will be used for future projects as the town continues to grow, and you have to make accommodations for that growth. Um, also, within your non-current assets, you have thirty-two point six million dollars of capital assets net of depreciation. And if you can look up at the top, you'll see you have a due from other funds, due from other funds. Um, there's a concentration cash account within the general fund, so that's basically the cash within the proprietary fund. It's sitting in the general fund, but it's due to the proprietary funds. So in essence, you know, that's the, the cash, um, everything runs to the general funding, and it's a concentration account, everything's allocated accordingly to the proprietary fund. So at year end, the general fund owed the, uh, the proprietary fund three point one million dollars, but that does, and that's being reflected on the general fund as a payable over, but it doesn't affect the one point one million dollars we just spoke about. That's in the positive, that's already accounted for within there, so. Um, and the general fund obviously has enough cash to, to, to pay for the amounts that are due over to the proprietary fund at all times. Um, as you can see below, your current liabilities, um, were seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, everything's current, everything's being paid on a timely basis. Um, non-current liabilities, um, primarily consist of the new, uh, the new liability or the new long-term debt you had, debt that was incurred over the past couple of years related to your E and R upgrade. And then when you take the excess of those assets, liabilities, non-current liabilities, there's your net position. We talked about about thirty-five million dollars, of which it's broken out into various categories. So you have your net investment in capital assets, which is, which is just a function of your capital assets over the debt that was used to acquire those capital assets. And then you have those restricted funds for the impact fees, which have been segregated up above in a separate, um, investment account. And then at the end of the day, um, you have unrestricted funds, and this is the portion that's being used for the operations of your proprietary fund, being three point three billion dollars, which in essence is your total current liabilities over your tur, or your total current assets over your total current liabilities, um, net of that current portion of long-term debt. Any questions in terms? Um, and then also, I'm just going to go over, I mean, just mentioning the rest of the audit report. Um, there are notes to the financial statements, there's some really good notes in terms of, I was a council member. Footnote number F at the bottom of page twenty-seven talks about your long-term debt and your future obligations on the long-term debt. The town doesn't have, you know, much debt in terms of governmental-wise. Um, you do have the one loan with the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration for the E and R. But in general, um, you know, the town is pretty much, doesn't have much debt going on, and, uh, I know the town is making accelerated payments to, to pay that off, et cetera. Um, and that's about it, like I said, I'm not going to go over every single footnote in the back there. But, uh, I would say the debt footnote is probably the one that gets these garners the most, uh, interest from boards or councils, et cetera. And then in addition to the proprietary fund information that we just talked about, also in the back, um, on pages thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, there's some more detailed information regarding the proprietary funds. Page number thirty-seven breaks out by segment, the wastewater treatment plant, um, the water system, and the refuse collection. So you can kind of see, um, you know, what the revenues were that were rolled up into the front of the other statement that we just spoke about, the income statement for the year. And then on page thirty-eight, there is budget to actual information, so you can see how the proprietary fund did by, um, each one of the segments by budget, um, et cetera. I don't think there's anything much to highlight there, um. Um, other than you could see where the wastewater treatment plant is. Um, you could see those positive variances up at the top related to those impact fees and those capacity allocation charges that are budgeted um, for operations, they're just there for, um, you don't budget them because they're not for operations, but they do get put into the restricted account. So you can see those variances up at the top there, but other than that, everything pretty much was infling, um, with what was budgeted operationally wise. And the last thing I want to mention is, we talked about, um, you know, what kind of auditor's report you had. I just bore you about all of the different funds in the town, and, you know, where you stand financially. And, uh, you know, the final, the last thing I want to mention is, obviously, you know, you could infer that I said we don't have any journal entries. This is our first year doing the audit, these are the types of audits that I want, our firm wants, in terms of being smooth, seamless, and, uh, you know, we don't normally see, you know, what we get, like you do. You're very lucky for a small town to have, um, this type of, uh, you know, or this level of financial record-keeping.
We're very lucky to have Rebecca Southern.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So you, overall, you didn't see any concerns, um, during the budget?
No, I mean, I met with you and Michelle and during the process, um, you're echoing the same thing that, um, that I, that I've seen. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm an outsider coming in, just looking at it independently, and, uh, you know, I was very, very happy.
No, no concerns about internal controls or anything?
No, I mean, you have adequate staff to be able to implement what you need to implement here.
Great.
Good.
Council members have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, certainly appreciate it. Have a safe trip back.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, Rebecca, anything else?
That's it.
That's it, okay, very good, thank you. Jada, Planning Department.
Uh, the last planning and zoning meeting was held in September, and as of now, there is still nothing on the agenda for November, so as of today, it looks like we can't wait to meet as well.
Good. Christie, Police Report.
We're busy?
Yes.
We had, uh, the food drive on Saturday, and we did great. We took, uh, several chocolate shops out to the, uh, kitchen of the hospital at Thursday Church. And then, of course, we had the parade yesterday, and then we're getting ready for, uh, Christmas dinner, so. And then we have all the, the usual stuff and food.
Christie was saying that there was a four-car accident at Mookley Street today, so.
I was a little wet.
Yeah.
There was one not that long ago, too, wasn't there, like last week, I want to say?
Well, you know, people make a lot.
All the time.
They're trying to make a left into there and they're not paying attention. There was one at Birchmark this morning.
Yeah, Birchmark, first thing this morning. Oh, Michelle, have we heard back from the state on the, uh, the, um, light at Clark's Rest?
No, we have not.
Okay. I know, okay.
I mean, they asked for some additional information a few months ago, but we haven't put it back. We provided it.
Okay. When you catch up on every, everything, you may send a note to check the status of that piece. Anything else for Christie? Okay, thanks very much. Uh, Michelle, your report, please.
Okay, I just have two items, both are, um, utilities related, so Jay Johnson is here to help answer any questions that you might have. The first one is the Tudor Hall Water Tower repair and painting project. Um, the cleaning and repainting of some, uh, specific areas in the interior of the dry chamber of the Tudor Hall Water Tower was publicly bid in March of this year. Three bids were received ranging from fifty-seven thousand to a hundred and four thousand, and those are broken out on. and those are broken out on the updated sheet that I gave you today. The original consultant estimate was only thirty thousand dollars, so we delayed the project back in March to do a more thorough investigation. The recommendation from staff and the consultant, who is Doug DeClerc, we've used him on several different occasions, is to proceed with the project with the low bidder Mediterranean Construction in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars. Mediterranean has agreed to hold their bid price from March. And the project is weather-sensitive, so we're hoping to get it done this year. But if, we need to get the motor replaced in the well first, we don't want to have them both offline. So depending on how the timing, it could be spring before this gets done, and Mediterranean has agreed to do it in the spring as well if that needs to be done. Any questions or Jay?
So once they start, how long does it usually take?
Oh, they say about three weeks.
Really, okay.
That's what the tower down there.
And we have a budget for this to?
It'll require contingency funds, but there's a contingency plan, I'm in the budget already.
Okay, so we're good.
And again, there were three bids on this, so this is the lowest bid.
I'm just curious, do we know of anyone else that has used Mediterranean before?
Doug DeClerc knows all of them.
Okay. He recommends them?
They're doing work now at the Dallas Airport.
Okay.
And they're waiting to add the footage of this one, get the weather permits, but we give them plans to do so.
And they think they can fit it in this year?
With the weather.
Right.
Yeah, weather-dependent.
No more snow?
It has to be fifty-five, above.
Gotcha.
Okay. So then, this makes your understanding, so then this tower site is offline, right, while they do the?
For three weeks.
Three weeks, okay.
For three weeks, yes. And it will be offline at the starting time, not before. If we do it in less cold and sweat, and then we can just wait and, uh, let that water be used until they're ready. I hate the wastewater, so.
So you don't have to drain it?
No, no, drain it, we just let people use it until it's out after mold. They will put a well online to make sure that it stays, the system stays where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, and what's the status of the one well that needs motor replaced?
Look like another week or two before we can get that.
Okay.
They have to build it, the pump and the motor. So we have two wells on standby, something should happen. One will automatically come on and alert us that number five is out.
Yeah, okay.
And then one of the local guys here will come and turn number four out. Right now, three and four will handle what we're actually producing, four hundred and some, five hundred and some thousand. Well, three and four will handle that.
Okay.
The problem I was afraid of is doing the boarding of the lines.
Right, right, so we're past that season now, yes.
So when we take the tower out, will people, will people see reduced pressure, or will, can the wells keep the pressure?
The well can keep the pressure.
Okay.
We've had green briar down over, and they had one well on twenty-four, seven, and we kept the pressure in there. Here's a way to do this.
So I'm assuming paint color, it will be the exact same color?
This is, it's inside.
Oh, inside only. So are they cleaning anything outside, or still nothing?
That's a future.
Okay, all right. Okay.
This is a larger project, just like it took, you know, the bid documents for Greenbrier.
Okay.
They have to do some welding and have to do some roving and, you know, down.
All right, I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood, I don't know why I thought it was outside, so it's all inside, okay.
The tower is fifty-five feet in diameter.
Okay.
And we have two platforms, about fifty-five feet in diameter, and it's very rusty. I have pictures of it, I'm sure you have.
Okay, yeah, that'd be interesting to see.
And I'm just a little afraid that we're gonna have to find a way to carry it instead of just blasting it in the paint.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
All right, I move to award the water storage tank reconditioning for the Tudor Hall Tower to the Mediterranean Construction in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is to repair sludge drying beds. We talked a couple minutes ago about the contract for the hot sludge hauling and the challenge of keeping up with the sludge. We have a project for modifications that are needed to the drying beds. We bid, publicly bid this in August, and we did not receive any bids. Jay has since worked with AB and H Construction to get pricing, to work with them under our current maintenance contract. The original estimate was twenty-six thousand dollars. However, under the contract with time and materials, Jay feels that it probably will come in less than that. These are needed to store additional sludge for drying. And we currently have thirty-one thousand in the capital budget for repairs to the opposite side of the bed, but they, he wants to repair this side first, and then we would be working later, coming back on the other side of the bed. And we also have money in contingency for anything that would go over that thirty-one thousand, once we complete both sides of the bed.
The east side asphalt, which is pop-on asphalt, has failed. We drive the tractor back and forth to load, unload, and move the sludge around. Well, we have numerous holes, and I'm talking about three to four feet. And that is going down on top of our drain valve, fan pipes, I need to stop that. Then it's unsafe, you have to drive along and also track to a dip over and steer that crap out of it. But I do need this as soon as possible. Number one to bid on this, and I'm thinking that it's because of sludge. People run away from sludge because of some regulations. And that's what I'm thinking. But AB and H is willing to tackle that task and get it cleaned up, and then take the asphalt out, level those stones, and repair some of the piping that's broken, and then put it back together with concrete. This concrete will allow the sludge to drain even more, because I'm leaving two feet all around the whole bed, so it can drain to the piping that's underneath. And that way, we can store more and also drain, and I think that will work for us. Right now, it's hard for us to actually store it, because we can't drive to get one to the whole bed.
Okay, any questions?
So this'll be phase one, and the next phase we'll do in the spring, is that what's going to be?
If I get the funding.
Gotcha.
Well, I mean, your plan is to finish this and then try to move forward in the spring with the other side.
Yes, with the other side.
Gotcha. And what do you think the other side's gonna cost, do you have any idea?
Uh, that could be cheaper.
Okay, so.
We have budget.
And usually the breathing water's not breaking down.
Oh, I see.
That's not broken down like this one has, with three, three to four, three holes.
So what we have right now is thirty-one thousand that we put in the budget previously for fixing the other side. But since this is more urgent at this time, moving forward with this, and then we have to dip into contingency to cover the other side, but it sounds like it would be less.
Yeah.
So twenty, less than twenties.
Thirty-one may cover issue.
Thank you.
And not only that, by them doing this side, they will see what's there. And if they can save time and money by working the other side.
Seems reasonable.
And plus, we'll have an inspector there to make sure that timing two means timing two.
Okay.
Perfect.
Our current maintenance contract is with?
AB and H.
AB and H.
I knew they handled a lot of the streets and roads, that wasn't a, using them for things at the, at the point of.
I mean, the main function is water and sewer repairs.
Any other comments, concerns? Motion?
I'll move to approve moving forward with the sludge drying bed modifications under the AB and H maintenance contract. I'll second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, moving on to my report then, it was a great Veterans Day parade yesterday, beautiful weather, so brought out a nice crowd, a lot of participants, so it was a very nice event. We were talking earlier, thought it really went very well, there was no, little minor hiccup here and there, but nothing, uh.
Nothing anybody noticed, I don't think.
Yeah, so, no, I thought it was a great day, celebrate our veterans. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Only thing, other thing I wanted to bring up was the branding, sending that over to the marketing committee of the LBA. It seemed like everybody was on board with that at workshop, so that's what we'll go ahead and do, get them. Yeah, and, you know, a number of us had concerns about the L in that, that little symbol, to kind of highlight that a little more, so we'll, you know, that'll be part of the recommendation to them. Okay? And moving on to reports, Tyler's not here, but everyone's got a copy of the events report. And as you know, there's plenty of things going on, of course, the, the tree lighting ceremony, day after Thanksgiving. Of course, we had the trick-or-treat a couple of weeks ago. I know I handed out, I had over fifteen, about fifteen hundred pieces of candy. One bag was small, so I kind of gave two of those out, but it had to be thirteen hundred kids that actually came through.
Oh, it was packed, it was packed. Oh, it was packed.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Do we give guidance to people about how much candy to buy? Because I did hear that from a few of the shop owners when I walked by, that they were out of candy and it'd been, you know, forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I mean, Randy sends out a lot of communications about it.
Yeah.
Says that, you know, you should have thirteen hundred pieces of candy.
Yeah, well, I mean, she gives numbers for previous years.
Right.
Okay.
But the weather was perfect this year, too.
The weather was perfect, yeah, it was beautiful.
It was warm and it was raining.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did show up to give out candy, but my spot was already taken, so I just got to wander around, it was okay.
Spot was taken?
Yeah.
I thought you were doing it right out from here.
Yeah, I came in, and they were like, nope, we got it covered, we don't need you, I said, oh.
Oh, you mean with, okay.
With the town, with, in front of the town office.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so, that's fine, I got to wander around and talk to all the business owners and.
Okay, good.
So, it was fine.
Yep. Okay, Hayden, community development and planning?
Not a whole lot to report, there's been a number of new, new houses and a couple of new businesses that have opened up. We have a number of renovations that are ongoing.
Yep.
Luckily, we haven't had too many zoning issues or approval.
I was talking to Wayne Davis, he's got Domino's, of course, assigned for out there, and he's talking to a pharmacy, and then he's, and he's.
He's submitted for it now for the pharmacy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, very good. And he's talking to a restaurant, but hadn't gotten a signed lease on that yet, so. But then he said, actually, on Penny's property, he's talking to a, a group about a, like an office building back there, so hopefully that moves forward.
Yeah, I mean, let's get that here, I agree.
Yep. Okay. Christie, utilities?
No, I don't have anything, just.
Other than today's meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Jay, Southern Malamoose Association.
Again, I'll just echo your response to Veterans Day, it was a great turnout, it was great to honor all those veterans who have served and who are currently serving. And also, just a reminder, Legislative Dinner, it's December eleventh, it's in Annapolis, it's at the Middleton Tavern. So it's Wednesday, December eleventh, if anybody's interested in attending.
Do you, have you gotten any responses to the legislature as to who's gonna show up yet?
I have not heard yet, I'll have to reach out to, I think Stacy from North Beach is kind of overseeing, so I'll have to ask her.
Okay.
And last but not least, happy, I hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Have to see everybody at the tree lighting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's right, we won't see anybody until. At the tree lighting. And they're looking for volunteers, too, didn't I see that go around, looking for volunteers for the tree lighting?
Yeah, we can release some help with decorating as well.
So contact Boyan D, right?
Is that this weekend coming up, the eight, eighteen, sixteen?
I think so.
Yeah, so.
Is that Saturday?
We did release, where, last year we had, um, Bob here from Harry Munberg, I don't think we have this this year. So, fourteen, fourteen is a Saturday, but that's this weekend. Sixteen is Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, right, okay, sixteen, right.
What time is that, Saturday, are they starting?
We haven't really set a time yet, but if anyone's willing to take any action.
I'll try again.
Yeah, we're around too, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, really, you know, it's a few hours, but just getting the stars up and changing out banners and that's okay.
Okay, Mary Business Development, retention?
Wanted to complement the new Action Lounge and Billiard Parlor, which is apparently getting rave reviews.
Yeah.
Everybody that I've talked to just loves it over there.
Yeah.
So I think that's gonna be a nice fit in Little Town, and I haven't heard a final update on the White Rabbit Bookstore, if they're actually leaving.
I just saw a Facebook post, they, they're packing everything up, and they showed pictures of the new location.
So they are leaving, yeah.
I talked to Ellen about it, yeah, she really looked for a space, but she's thinking that she'll get more traffic in Wildwood, so she just.
And she said with, even with the success of the billiard place, they weren't sure that that was the right clientele to be going in next to a children's bookstore, so I get it.
And actually, I talked to Charlie, I stopped by there last night, and actually stopped by last Saturday, the second night they were open. And they're making it very family-friendly oriented. You know, they've got games in there for kids, and basketball, and video games, and, and, yeah, they're, no, obviously, late at night, there is gonna be a different crowd.
Right. Yeah, she, she just said it was really loud in there with the billiard, you know, that it was so loud coming through the walls. She said our books are shaking, vibrating a little bit through the walls.
Well, actually, Dr. Charlie, I think he's gonna try to take that space.
Okay.
Expand there, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a nice fit for Little Town, I'm sorry to lose the bookstore.
Yeah, I was very upset with it.
And he was, one of the, Matt was at the LBA and talking about how they can take those, those pool tables out and make, make room for parties and stuff in different locations.
Like a banquet hall or something, kind of?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. And then the only other question I had was, I saw Doug Isle yesterday at the, at the fair parade, and I said, oh, congratulations on being on the Board of Appeals, he goes, I am? I didn't know that.
Well, I told him I was, so.
I said, well, I guess you gotta go read the minutes, so.
Well, we're sending out letters, I need to get with Jada, we just haven't had a chance.
Yeah, so I just, I didn't know if they, if they knew, and I was like, ooh, maybe I should send the minutes, so you're supposed to know it.
It's out there.
Yeah, we, they knew we were voting on it, but we haven't sent official notifications.
That's it, that's all I have.
When's the last time Board of Appeals actually met?
That's, he was like, well, what do I do? I said, I don't know, as far as I know, nothing.
They'll tell you.
And I, actually, when I met with them, I told them, you know, we haven't had a meeting in over a year, so.
About a year.
Yeah, so, but, okay. Anything else? Actually entertain a motion to move into executive session now.
Close the regular.
Close, close the regular meeting, move into executive session.
So I move to close the regular meeting and move into executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So we'll meet out here in a few minutes.